Let's call the meeting to order. We're all present except for Kenny and George. I have not heard from either one of them.
George is out at a conference or something.
He will not be here.
Yeah, he will be here.
Okay. Item one, we've already passed that. Item two, the commissioner's request, discuss any item of concern on the regular session agenda of August, October 16, 2018.
Bill, I do have one question. Actually, I'm just kind of looking for information, and it's not for myself because I've already term limited myself out, but I noticed on our agenda tonight, we've got an item pertaining to the upcoming election.
Mm-hmm.
And is the, are the dates mandated in the city charter? The reason I ask is, to me, probably the strangest time of year to have people file for office is in between Thanksgiving and Christmas. And then, the, from, if you file, you've got the month of January and half of February, which are the raunchiest weather times of the year.
Mm-hmm.
And then you have the election in February, which I, even in a couple of elections that I've participated in, the weather was not very conducive to getting out a good crowd. And I just wonder why we would pick that particular time of year and those particular dates to put this thing together.
Well, they are mandated in, in the charter, and, but we could change them. And the reason why we have the gap of time is because of some due process rights back from the 1990s. And particularly with Vance being in our community, it's the absentee ballots and things. So, state law requires, if we're going to have the county election board do our elections for us, they've got deadlines and stuff. So that's why we used to do the, if I'm remembering correctly, we used to do the filing period in January, and maybe we had March and April, or maybe it was February and March. But you have to have, now for the state election boards, you have to have at least 60 days in between the elections so that they can get all of the absentee ballots and provide for overseas people doing the ballots. Now, we could, if we wanted to, we could do, the elec, our charter does allow us to do our own elections. But...
We shouldn't.
Uh, we shouldn't. But we could reconsider, but generally, state law has, I mean, we're a charter city, but most cities all get the early election time periods in the year on the off years, just like the school board.
Hmm. Don't, don't you think though filing after the first of the year would, would probably make more sense than what we're doing now?
That's what we used to do, but that doesn't give the election board the time they need to get the ballots right.
Well, couldn't, couldn't the election be held a little bit later than it is? Or is that not, not a possibility? I mean, we, we don't...
Would we have to amend the charter?
Hmm?
Would we have to amend the charter?
Yes, we would have to amend the charter. As it is, it's actually not when the charter says because they switch Tuesdays. But yes, we would, we would need to amend the charter, but we could do that. But in general, it's these early months that are when municipal elections occur.
Well, it just seems like a strange time of year to do it.
Mm-hmm.
They are very low terms.
Yeah.
And I can, and I can see why.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, just something that I was interested in, and I knew we were talking about it tonight, and we were going to, and perhaps, you know, if the newspaper publicized this a little better, we could, you know, it would help us to get more people to participate in, not only in the nominations, but also in the election, so.
Well, if you say something ridiculous or obnoxious tonight during what we discuss upstairs, it's far more likely we'd better publicize. I just, you know...
Say, say something really off color?
Yeah, well, no, not ridiculous or obnoxious. I, classy, but, you know, one of...
All right. Anyway...
Visibility, yeah.
Yes. Just something I was interested in, Bill.
Yeah, it, it is a...
We get too off color.
No, 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 no.
I'll catch it. No, no, we'll catch it.
I have no doubt.
And they've limited our number of actual times for special sess, special elections, too.
Well, I think election board, as on the election board for a couple of years, I think it's only six available slots during any given calendar year and no two consecutive months.
Yeah.
And so we can...
Yeah.
But we could throw it onto, we could throw a city council onto a, I mean, surely there'd be some way to put it on, on a slate with something else. I mean, we're frequently kind of all that's there, or not a whole lot else.
Yeah.
But we'd have to amend the charter. And amending the charter requires...
An election.
Yeah, so...
We've already amended it once.
Mm-hmm. Oh, I'm sure more than once, but...
Yeah.
I mean, before the city council meeting.
Yeah.
Item three, discuss legislative issues and priorities for Kurt Rovin. Kurt, thank you for being here.
Glad to be here. All right. It's gonna be real short, just not a legislative time of year, but it is campaign time of year. And three weeks from today, that will all come to an end and begin for one lucky governor's candidate and a lot of other elected officials out there. The general ballot is set. I brought in some general ballots for you all to take home. There's extra. I asked Gerald to keep some extras around on the break tables and things like that for staff or anybody who wants to look at them, because there are some state questions. We did have a runoff election here recently, and we had another round of incumbents dropped. The first election in June, there were six incumbents that dropped or got beat by their own party. And there were another six out of 10 incumbents that were trapped in these runoff elections, lost to challengers. And I thought this was real interesting because there's been some relationships between 1990 and the 1017, the historical education agenda back then, and today. There's so many similarities, that could be its own slideshow, but in this case, back in 1990, after 1017 passed, there were 12 incumbents that were defeated during the election, the entire election cycle. We've already had 12 go down just through the runoff. You know, some are predicting there could be a couple more. There always is. There's always an incumbent or two that gets lost in the shuffle and loses. So, very similar to what went on in 1990 with that historic rally that occurred back then. You had the city leaders form their own organization back then in 1990, just like you had Step Up. So, I thought that was worth pointing out for historical reasons. There's actually, from this last runoff, it actually brought in five new members of the legislature, and here they are. Darrell Fincher from Barlesville area, Danny Sterling from McLeod, Mark Van Kuren from, it looks like Tulsa area, representative-elect A.J. Pittman, who's the daughter of Anastasia Pittman, took her mother's seat. She held previously, and now she retired from the Senate. And then Bill Coleman out in Osage County, Eddie Fields. The respective parties replaced the, the, the party that was represented in those areas. This is the big number tonight. We are guaranteed 54 new legislators out of 149 legislators between the Senate, 48 in the Senate, 101 in the House. 54 guaranteed today will be new, which is remarkable. I, even two years ago, I said it was record breaking. The breakdown, 12 senators already, 42 in the House. So if you hear of some incumbents that go down on election night, November 6th, just add them to that number right there. And I didn't put it up here because I didn't have the exact number, but I can tell you within one, another staggering number, out of 149 legislators total, I believe it's either 100 or 101 will have two years or less experience.
Wow.
Incredible turnover. So we're dealing with a lot of new blood at the state council. The Senate, they announced their Senate committee chairs, their subcommittee. This is where the money travels through. These are the committees where the money passes through, and these are very important. Not any of those are necessarily, I guess you could say Darcy Yeg from Kingfisher is the closest one in this territory, but all those people will be handling the money on the Senate side. The House has not announced their subcommittee chairs as of yet, and there's been no announcement of your regular committee chairman in the House or Senate. But I thought it was interesting that it was an early announcement for the Senate in this group of individuals. They usually wait until after the election. So, covering some agency issues, this was a small issue, but obviously the bigger one was your water loan that was passed through the Water Board here recently. Your 81 project is up and running with your bridge. Just covering and looking at agendas, I saw that they're putting in a railroad crossing over by Fairmont, and as close as I can tell, it's on a dirt road. I think it's a highly traveled dirt road. I, I know the area pretty well, and it's a high-speed rate, a train. I know that they already have a crossing right there at Fairmont. What was interesting is how expensive those are. I'm not saying that this was too expensive, but that bottom line for that railroad crossing with the gates and lights, just over $400,000. This was on the transportation docket, so letting you know what's going on in the area right there. Interim studies, kind of boiled it down to some really good ones that are happening. This one just happened last month, and this was the study examining grant money for municipalities. Got a little bit of the story on this one. Broken Arrow received a federal grant of over $1 million. I want to say it was 1.4 million or 1.2. It was very significant. It was for sidewalks, oddly enough, and that's, that's a pretty good chunk of change. There's always administrative fees when it passes through a state agency to handle the money and, and distribute that money. And typically, you see agencies, in this case, typically Department of Transportation would charge 6% administrative fees. On this particular grant, it was 20%, and Broken Arrow, they, they had a fit. And so that's what brought this interim study to the forefront. I know OML is on top of this issue. I think there's probably gonna be in the future, hopefully, some agreement worked out on, on keeping those administrative fees at bay. Department of Transportation said they were well within their means, but it was pretty, pretty high-priced, and, you know, so there was an argument, and I would suspect there's probably gonna be some legislation to follow. Interim studies are gonna happen next week. Study on aquifer recharging, Senator Dave Raider, Raider from Tulsa, that's Coach Raider for Tulsa hurricane fans. He's already in his third year, I think, as state senator. I will be attending this meeting right here because water is obviously very important.
Is that any particular aquifers? Is that just recharge rates in all our aquifers in the state?
The, the study was written, as you read right there, a study on aquifer recharging. So, I'm sure he's just gonna cover whatever aquifer he wants and have, I haven't looked at the agenda yet, but the agenda's probably out there. Anyway, touchy, touchy, could be a touchy issue if it just, we just needed to stay alert. This one also is happening next week, a study of online sales taxation. And this is an issue, I believe, that's gonna be revolving around discovery and recovery issues. Evidently, right now, there is a firm that you can hire to go out there and find sales tax dollars that you're missing. The county commissioners were able to do this on the county level several years ago. They started this back in the 90s, where they would hire a third-party firm and find pipelines that weren't paying or some other asset out there that was not on the rolls. So there's, there's a firm out there that you can hire to find specifically, I guess, internet sales taxes not being collected. According to what I understand, statutorily, it's the tax commission's job to do the recovery. If you find entities that are not paying sales tax, you have to turn that over to the state tax commission to recover those sales tax dollars. I don't think anyone is saying that the tax commission is doing a poor job. I don't think that's the point here, but with this day and age of internet sales, small businesses popping up rather quickly online, it's drawing some attention. As you well know, we've had a lot of success in collecting, collecting sales tax, internet sales tax over the last several years, but now I think it's starting to boil down more to the mom-and-pop, small business folks out there that are escaping those taxes. So, that's gonna be an interesting one. I know the tax commission is, is gonna be presenting on that. A term...
Is that more than a two-hour study?
Oh, it'd probably be, let's see, 1 o'clock? Yeah, it'd probably be over with by 3, hour and a half, maybe.
To me, that's, that's very sad to have it in a two-hour session.
Sure. You'd like to dedicate a whole day?
A whole year.
A whole year.
If we're working at tax revenue to come to the city of Enid...
Yeah.
That we're not getting.
This is an important one, because this is where the rubber meets the road. This is, we're talking about money. I heard a new term. I've heard it before, but I didn't know what it meant. Oklahoma City is a streamlined city. What is streamlined city? I, I don't, are we a streamlined city? Is there some, something to do with sales tax collections there?
I think, just talking about sales tax, I think I got it.
Okay. All right. So, there may be an opportunity for cities like Enid to get into the recoverability department. It's a possibility. I think that could be a fix instead of relying on the tax commission. Again, not saying that they're doing a bad job, but it's, can be overwhelming, and they're operating within the means that are given to them. So, a good, that's gonna be a good topic to keep an eye on. I brought some state ballots for you to look at. Please, commissioners, take those home. I brought extras, as I announced here, but on the back, we got some state questions, just real briefly. State question is for the viewing audience for their benefit as well, but state question 793 has to do with optometrist. This was an initiative petition that was brought in outside of the legislature through a signature process to allow some of your big-box stores like Walmart to have in-house You know, obviously, the, that's, you know, in the Walmart category is probably where it came from. A lot of other states participate in this. Some of your local optometrists may see the other side of the equation, so that's out there. State question 794, I believe, is Marcy's Law that you're starting to see advertised rights for crime victims. State question 798 is going to address the governor and lieutenant governor running as a ticket, like we do on the presidential. Would begin, it would begin, if it passed, it would begin the 2026 general election cycle to allow these folks that are coming in to, to phase out. State question 800, creating the Oklahoma Vision Fund, which is basically another rainy day fund to try to maybe avoid the budget situations that we've had in the past. Starts out with a 5% of gross production, but there's other levels of funding, once achieved, that it kind of stair steps down and reaches an amount that I believe is explained in the, in the state question on the ballot. And then state question 801, this is, I think, could be interesting for rural schools. Right now, with regard to Avalorn taxes and the collection of that going to our local schools, they can only use those Avalorn taxes for building fund. In an area that is rich with Avalorn taxpayers like Garfield County, you got wind farms, you got coke nitrogen, you got a lot of pipelines, the schools can only use that for their building fund, but they can't buy a ream of paper or use it for teacher salaries. So this frees that up to allow the school district to do other things with those Avalorn tax dollars. And of course, we already had the, the, the other state question that was on the ballot with medical marijuana in June. And by the way, if, if you've been keeping up with the clippings I've been sending out, there have been a number of cities already addressing that issue with their city code in a variety of ways. So there's a lot of, maybe cities also waiting to see what the legislature does to, to clean it up as well. There's been a task force on the medical marijuana, a meeting weekly at the Capitol for, I want to say, three months already. And so there will be several pieces of, I would, I'm just gonna take a bet right, or say it right now, probably be in excess of 80 pieces of legislation, maybe 80 to 100. So that's, that issue's gonna get interesting. Couple important election dates. One has already passed, unfortunately. Last day to register to vote was October 12th for this general election. However, if you need an absentee ballot, October 31st is the last day to request that, and of course, the general election, November 6th. And, let's see, I had a couple, let's see if I covered everything. Any questions?
Kurt, why don't you talk about some of your activities with OML, working on some issues, and forthwith municipality?
Yeah, in fact, we already have a meeting, we're calling all the city lobbyists together in the month of November, at, right after the general election, and I don't remember the date right off, but pulling all those lobbyists together to discuss the OML agenda items. Obviously, alcohol. I know Carol found some discrepancies when, when we were filing for that permit. Norman is going through the same thing with their permitting and their golf course. I know there's other cities. I mentioned the medical marijuana, but that's gonna be a time for us to just throw all of our issues out on the table. I know that there are some studies going on at Corporation Commission. I didn't make that part of the slideshow, but Corporation Commission is, I believe, in a study on wind energy siting with regard to military. I think they're gonna be revisiting that issue. So there's gonna be, all of a sudden, we'll find a lot of issues on the table here prior to Bill filing. Bill filing is always the first, the first stage of it, is the first week of December, and then you don't get to see the legislation. Legislators, legislators make the requests for the bills, and about the third week of January is when the legislation start, you, you view most of it and it gets filed. And then, of course, session starts the first Tuesday in February. So, once that election takes place, it's just gonna be fast and furious. It already, I can already feel the pace starting to kind of pick up again, and people are getting bills lined up. It's gonna be an interesting governor's election. It's gonna be tight. It's hopefully not as tight as the Attorney General race on the Republican ticket during the runoff, but polling, polling's close. It's within the margin of error, which is 4%. Any other questions?
Thank you. Kurt, I was just gonna mention, just briefly, too, I know Kurt's gonna help us through a little bit reviewing our communications with landowners on the Call Lake project, just to take a look at that, and his background as a farmer, a landowner, Farm Bureau guy, having dealt with some of this before.
Yeah, I think, ironically, I, I think I bring something to the table, being grown up in that industry, number one, dealing and watching the wind, developers develop their wind farms. I've, I feel like I've learned a thing or two about how they interact with landowners. I've also learned a lot during this Wind Catcher project and watched how that kind of collapsed. And a lot of that is directly tied to how you treat landowners and the relationship that you have with them and doing it properly. And, you know, that's a big deal. That's a big deal to me, and I, I've told Gerald on several occasions that I wanted to be involved in that, and so he's letting me be involved in that. So for whatever it's worth, I'm just gonna pass along what I, my, my knowledge on the issue.
I don't know if you mentioned it or not, you're, you're working, maybe you did, about some of the alcohol and marijuana issues?
Yeah, I mentioned that. And I've had, I'm, I'm on the phone with OML quite often, and that is on the top of their list. They know that there's gonna have to be some tweaks in the, the alcohol legislation. As you well know, October 1st was that magical date where you go to Walmart and buy wine and full-strength beer at the golf course and all that stuff. And then on the medical marijuana side, it's just gonna be a huge amount of legislation, I can already see.
And remind them about the very weird speeding problem?
Very weird speeding problem.
You know, the, the law that was supposed to be just for the troopers?
No.
Okay.
I didn't, I was not aware of that.
Okay. There's...
Girl, I need to speak to you afterwards.
I'll let you know.
Okay.
It's just, it's, it's, there was a law that was supposed to only apply to the state entities, and maybe it applies to municipalities, and it's a mess.
Yeah.
But I'll, I'll send you an email.
Okay, will do.
I'm sure it's on OML's radar.
Yeah, literally.
Yes.
Anything on bail or sentencing reform?
No. Well, I'm sure there is, it's just not something I've been following since, since, I know that...
I do, I would like it to be something.
Former Speaker of the House, Chris Steele, has worked a lot in that area. And sentence, and I think, I think there was some legislation, there was a state question on some marijuana issues. I think they addressed some issues last year with regard to felonies, because, you know, and I see this too with one of, I, kind of open discussion, I have another client in the, represent, Used Motor Vehicle and Parts Commission, where they take care of the salesman's licenses and things of this nature. And there are felons that come through that have either violent convictions or just, wow, I couldn't believe that was a felony type situation, trying to get licenses, and they review those one at a time. And so I think it is important, you know, you've gotta put people to work, and, but it's gotta be the right, the right fit. We can't have hardened criminals in certain positions, but we certainly can have people who have been reformed, you know? But that's my personal opinion.
Well, I'd love to see us do something as, as a state in order to be able to, you know, keep 70%. I mean, we've got astronomical numbers of individuals locked up for things that, quite frankly, they could be back being productive members of society.
Right. And I, and again, I'll, Chris Steele, I know he's put a lot of work, former speaker, just of, from just a few years ago, he's put a lot of work into criminal justice reform and putting people back to work. Don't know the name of his organization, but...
Would you put that on your list of things to track, too? Because I think that's important.
Okay, sure.
I appreciate it.
All right. Thanks, everyone.
All right, thank you. Item four, discuss the Parks and Recreation upcoming special events, the Haunted Gym and the Christmas in the Park. Cory?
Good evening, commissioners. Mayor, thank you for having me here today. I'm Cory Buller. I'm the interim supervisor with the Parks and Recreation Department. We've started working on a couple of new events this year that we are expecting to do every, become an annual event, something that's never been done here that I'm aware of. But I would like to introduce you to special ladies that have been working very hard on this, Kim Haley and Erica Smith. Kim is our pool and event manager, and Erica is our special event and asset coordinator. So, these two ladies have been working very hard on these events, and I'll let them kind of explain to you what we've got coming up. Kim, first.
I'd like to welcome you guys. We're gonna be doing the Haunted Gym at 10th and Chestnut, and it will be on the 30th for employees only, and then on Halloween night, we will be doing it from 4 to 8.
So the 30th is a run-through for employees to get it right?
Yes, sir.
And it's open to the public?
Will be open it up to employees and families on the 30th. So it'll be a test run for the employees on the 30th from 4 to 8, and then Halloween night will be for everybody else. And we'll be doing two different sessions, one with the lights on and one with the lights off. And we have 12 rooms throughout the gym, and seven of the rooms will have candy in them. And we have a glow room in a haunted hotel, and then we have our floating candles in our mystery room, and then we have our glowing hands in our hospital room. And then we have our morgue in our witch's room, and we have a werewolf in our jack-o'-lantern and pumpkin patch. We also have a spider room and a cemetery, and these all have different props in them. Some will be animated, and then we have our person tonight. Do you guys have any questions for us?
Cool.
Are you sponsored by the local dentists?
No, sir.
Is this free to the public?
It is free to the public.
Cool, very cool.
I just want to say, this is a great effort. This is the idea of the Parks and Rec Department, trying to provide more opportunities and events for the public. I'm very pleased, as far as, I know we've never, I don't know that we've done a haunted house at least in a long time, so, and we have a facility at Champion Gym, so I appreciate it. Does our patient, our person, continue to...
Our patient? She's in our... She's in our asylum room.
I'm glad you got her in a straitjacket.
Do you plan on doing a social media push for, for these?
Derek is on that, yes, we will, we will be, yes. And we've been advertising it for about, the Haunted Gym, probably at least a month now we've been.
Yeah, I've seen.
Kind of posting some stuff about it. Not really explaining what it is, but just a teaser.
How many participants can you handle at one time in that gym?
We're gonna do 10 at a time. So we're looking to do about 2,500 children, but we're gonna be doing 10 at a time in order to get them in and out of the rooms, because it's gonna be a maze.
So not 10 in the, in the building at once, but 10 through each?
10 through each room.
You're gonna move a lot of kids, that's gonna be cool.
I think you'll have a big crowd.
Yeah, yeah, that's great.
Now will somebody be counting to make sure that the same number of kids that go in come out the other end?
Eventually, yes, sir.
Turn the lights on.
Fantastic, thank you.
And here's Erica, who's gonna tell you guys about the Christmas celebration we have coming up at Meadow Lake Park.
Alright, so, good evening, as Cory said, my name's Erica, and I'm gonna talk about Christmas in the park. So Christmas in the park is gonna be at Meadow Lake Park North. It's gonna be from 6 to 9 p.m. on four Saturdays, beginning November 24th, running through December 15th. We're gonna have offsite parking available at the Save-A-Lot parking lot, also the Meadow Lake Golf Course. And if we have a couple other locations, if we deem that to be necessary, after the first evening, kind of judge how many people we're gonna see each night. An EPTA will be providing shuttles for those parking services. So here's kind of a map of the park and how it's going to be laid out. I'll touch on each of these as we go throughout the presentation, but as you can see, we'll have hot chocolate, cider, there'll be groups performing, we'll have cookie decorating, storytelling, a fire pit for warmth, Grinch and reindeer games, then also toy and ornament making. That'll all be up in that grassy area by the baseball softball field. Then down closer to the rides, we'll have a letters to Santa booth, and then Santa will actually be here themselves, so people will be able to get their picture taken with Santa. So Mrs. Claus will come and she's gonna light up the park every night at 6 p.m.
Mmm. We have guests.
So Mrs. Claus will be walking around and greeting everyone as they come and kind of enjoy the evening. She'll have some goodies that she will also be passing out as well. So the hot chocolate and hot apple cider that will be there for guests as well, and the various performers that will have, there'll be four groups every night. We have a few of them booked, we're still working to confirm the rest of them, but they'll be every 45 minutes. They'll have a half hour block with 15 minutes in between. Our cookie decorating and storytelling, so being able to decorate sugar cookies with frosting and then listen to Christmas stories being told. We are also inviting vendors to set up some booths, and we're only inviting those who have handmade and homemade items, so no direct sales products. We really want this to have that holiday feel, those homemade goods will be available. Then we have our Grinch and reindeer game booths, so the Grinch and Rudolph will have their game booth set up. So a couple of examples of these games, the Grinch toss, pin the nose on the reindeer. They will also have some goodies and freebies to kind of give out to the kids attending, just some little trinket items that they can take with them as mementos. Our toy and ornament making, so those booths will be next to each other, but will be two separate ones. So children will be able to make a small wooden toy and ornaments, we'll have some paint, not a lot, because we know drying and that sort of thing, just trying to make it fun and interactive. And there'll also be some photo props, so those frames that you see will be decorated with holiday themes and they can take pictures with them as well in that little area. We are also working to finalize having the Qantas rides being operational, so we're looking to have the train go through the park, and that will be the only fee for the event, and it's the $2 train ride. But we are gonna light up the trees around the train track, so as the train is driving through the park, all of those lights will be lit, or the trees will be lit up with lights, which will be really nice. And then where the train turns around in that loop, we've actually found four different City of Enid employees' families to kind of volunteer to stay in that space, and we're gonna put a fire pit down there. So it'll kind of create this nice Christmas holiday ambiance for them as that train goes through the loop for the turnaround. Next up, we have our letters to Santa booth, so children will be able to write a letter to Santa and place it in our magical mailbox pictured there. And like I said, the two fire pits that we have, one will be up.
Diane, what's up with?
No.
I do it.
So one of the fire pits will be up in that grassy area, and the other one, like I said, will be in that turnaround of the train. And then lastly, pictures with Santa and his helper, the elf. So the elf will kind of be helping with the line control, walking the children up to Santa and kind of helping to facilitate that process as well. So we hope to see you all at Christmas in the park. Does anyone have any questions?
Thanks, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
What are the nights again that you're going to be doing it?
So November 24th is that first Saturday, right after Light Up the Plains. And so that'll run every Saturday through December 15th, so those four Saturdays in a row.
Great.
That's awesome.
Once again, for those people that wonder what to do in Enid, here's.
Yeah, no kidding, that's great.
It's a good start.
Yeah, that's really cool. Have fun.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, thank you. Item five.
Yes, that's gonna be Christie Hatfield, you wanna come on up to the mic and talk about Air Med Care and?
She will discuss the agreement with Air Med Care Network to provide discounted air ambulance membership to residents. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. Again, I'm Christie Hatfield, I am your local membership sales manager for this area. I cover nine counties, of course, this is one of them. What we do is we partner with cities, and it doesn't, there's no charge to the city to partner with us. All it is, is we're offering a discounted rate. In the packets that you have, there is a copy of the letter that you would sign off on if you agree to this, and then there's a sample letter, what goes out to your city customers. And how that is, is normally when you become a member and you sign up, it's $85 for the year for you and your entire household, whether there's one of you or 10 of you in the house, it's $85 for the year. So if you partner with us, we would just offer that at a discounted rate of $65, okay? So we have two programs, there is what we call the emergent, which is like life or limb, heart attack, stroke, car wreck. We cover 38 states, 320 locations. Then we have a new program that's called Fly You Home. So say you're 150 miles away from home and got sick in the hospital, but you're stable enough to be flown back home to be closer to family. They will send a medical airplane after you staffed and get you back closer here, so it's easier for your family to take care of you. For example, we just had a family in Weatherford where I live, got on vacation, out there two days, the wife ended up in the hospital. Almost didn't make it, but she did, she pulled through, so they sent a medical airplane after her and flew her back home and got her back to where the family didn't have to keep taking turns flying back out to California. So, there's those two programs that they would be offered, and they, of course, on that one as well, they would get the discounted rate. You can do a year, you can do a three year, a five year, a 10 year, you can also do the combination, you'll see that all in there in the example letter, what will go out. I just have to get with whoever's in charge of your city office to find out how many that you send out to, whether you do postcards or envelopes. If you do a mail out, then I just find out, you know, how many copies you need, if you want them folded or flat. And if you do the postcards, y'all just give me the addresses and then we'll send them out to all your city customers. Any questions right now?
Where do you come from?
I live in Weatherford, but we have a Weatherford base at Keen Fisher base, so Keen Fisher's the one that flies here and takes care of Enid. If they're on a flight, then backup would be our Stillwater base.
Is there a fee over and above the annual membership fee?
Do what?
Is there a fee over the annual membership fee?
No. Once you pay that $65 for a year, you're done. And then they send you every year, or if you do the three year, five year, however you do it, they'll send you about 90 days prior to expiring a notice in the mail for you just to renew. Also, when you sign up, they will send you membership cards and stickers for your vehicle. A lot of people go, well, I'm not a sticker person, so how would they know? Well, that's why you also get the membership card. The membership card needs to be stuck with your driver's license or like your insurance cards. And then always let your physicians know as well that you are a member of Aerie Back.
Do you have airplanes housed in Enid?
Not in Enid, we fly into Enid quite a bit, but we have, you get our helicopter out of Keen Fisher. And then if they're on a flight, then we would call Stillwater.
What happens if, Christie, if somebody doesn't have this and they require some kind of life flight, what, what is the charge?
You're looking at anywhere from a 30 to $60,000 flight, so as long as you have our membership, you will not see a bill. So it's cheap, I mean, you, you just, I mean, if you think about it, it's a cheap insurance for you and your entire family, because like I said, it's that for either one of you or 10 of you. If you've got kids in college, yes, they can be listed underneath you. If you have a loved one that's in a nursing home or assisted living, you can also list them under you, because that's not considered household.
For the emergent flight, is there a distance limitation?
No, I mean, usually they go to the city, I mean.
But I mean, is it, you know, OU Med's fine?
Yeah, yeah. We've landed on the interstate, I live at Weatherford, we landed on the interstate three times this summer within a month, because of all the wrecks that are happening. And we land in Wheatfields.
Do you cover, so how does this work if I'm in, if I have this service and I'm in like Guyman?
Then you're gonna get our Woodward base.
Okay.
Yeah.
But, but it statewide is.
Yes, yes, we're 38 states, 320 locations. Yes, and I gave him the map to pass around, so y'all can look at that. And it depends, say you're in a different state, which company you would get, the, all the companies that are up there in that right hand corner list all the companies.
Are you the only outfit in Oklahoma that's doing this?
We do have a competitor that also flies in here, and I think they're called Meta Flight.
Meta Flight, okay, that's.
Yeah.
Is this strictly helicopter?
This is, yes. And then if you do the Fly You Home, then you could do the 100, what we call the Fly You Home, which if you're 150 miles away from home, they would send a medical airplane. And you're on that looking 50 to 60,000. So if you do travel quite a bit, that's also a good package there.
What is your relationship with Enid?
We're not.
Nothing?
No.
Competitors?
They're more of an insurance, they're not a helicopter, they're just more of an insurance.
Explain that.
I'm still learning about them, they're just now coming to Oklahoma, and we're still gathering our information on that. But they are not a helicopter service.
Oh, I understand that, I understand that. But they're strictly ground, I think.
Yes, I think so.
Joe, do you, does the fire department works with them and maybe the other competitor too? Because it doesn't matter who flies in, doesn't the fire department, or does the fire department have any role in that anymore?
We will call if we need them, we know what business we're live handling as well. I think both organizations.
What are you wanting from the City of Enid?
Do what?
What are you asking for?
I just need someone, like if y'all vote on it and agree, then somebody needs to sign off on the agreement, and then I will send it back to corporate. We will get the letters turned in to for Enid, and then I just need to find out how many y'all would need.
Mayor, we just need to probably visit and see if this is something we want to do or not, and certainly I can get back with Christie and.
And I attached my card in there, so, and I have another one if anybody else needs a copy. Any other questions?
Thank you for coming.
Alright, thank you.
Item six is a tongue twister. Discuss, see, click, fix, launch.
Yeah, see, Derek's gonna take you through it, but see, click, fix is a new tool that the city has and is actually launched to help communicate with the public and allow the public to tell us about issues they see or communicate with, so they want a transit ride. So he's gonna take us through it, and we just launched it, so some people have actually used it, and I'm excited about it, so I hope you are too.
How do you use that?
Did you get, did you get the? Good. Free.
That's not interesting.
Alright. Greetings, I'm Derek Silas, Director of Electronic Communications, I'm Hiles in the Public Relations Department. We just recently launched See Click Fix. We did a soft launch on October 1st, which means we did not officially send a press release out about it, we just did it soft launch, and then last week, we sent press release out. So from the inception, we had people going on there since October 1st. Sent a press release last week to let them know about the See Click Fix. And what it is, is a 311 system that will allow citizens to support, to submit service requests or report issues in a community. It'll provide a way for them to have two-way communications versus them calling in issues. They can now track them on their phone, any issue that they have. We have several ways you can do it, so if you have an Android or iPhone, you can download the app in your Google Play or iPhone stores. As you can see here. And you can go through your browser directly to seeclickfix.com, or you can go to our website, we have it embedded on our page, enid.org/requestcenter. And I've created three videos explaining how to use it for the Android, iPhone, or how to use your browser. So if you go there, you can watch the videos on how to do it, it's really simple. It not only provides that, but because of, because of this app, you have these three, four tabs at the bottom. So in our place tabs, you can also do these, you can call transit, bureau closings, and other things like that nature that, so this can be one stop shop that you can come to versus having to go to the website. You can do everything through the app. And of course, you can view issues down here, I guess I should be doing this. Well, it's not working. You can view issues that's already submitted here, and you can report issues on your leftmost button. Here are all of the other items, other functionality here. Different things you can do. We've also embedded the, on Facebook, so if you are already logging to Facebook, you can click on this leftmost bottom link here, and you can report an issue. It'll go to this page, you can report an issue through Facebook. We also have it on our website, I've created a new button here on our front website, just click on that, and then you can go, you don't have to type in the, just go to enid.org and then just click on this. And of course, in our navigation, go to I want to report an issue, and we have the topmost issues directly linked also.
Oh, pothole is not nearly close enough to the top.
North, north of.
It's alphabetically.
I mean, come on.
Yes, alphabetically.
I'm just saying.
A pothole.
Y'all have two bucks too.
So we try to do different ways to think, we try to think different ways how a person would want to utilize these tools, so we have it there on the website as well. I can show you really quick, using a browser. As you can see, this is the live. So as you can see, that's there, you can go, and it'll just take you to this page here where you can see these videos explained, and then you can also just go ahead and report an issue there. So I'm going to actually sign into our test environment, so I won't mess up anything. This mouse, this thing keyboard is slow. It's really messing up. I was gonna try to show you one live here, but it's acting up here. Gosh, I'll go back up. It's not cooperating. For some reason, this mouse is really slow. Anybody having questions though? Yes, the mouse, it's the keyboard that keeps hanging up. It's something, it's something wrong with this mouse.
The Web Q and A. Does, does this replace Web Q and A?
It replaces that.
So, it's similar but better.
Okay. It looks like this does a lot more stuff.
This is so much more streamlined.
Yeah, this does a lot more stuff.
It has an automated piece on the back end where it automatically creates a ticket.
Oh, cool. That's, yeah, that's good. For sure.
So, let me go in. Let me show you. I'll just show you a report, I guess.
It's gonna be fun.
So, in this month, you can, this, this, this is how many we've gotten in two weeks. So, 55 people have requested bus rides and 16 potholes have been created, six have been closed, I mean, fixed, 10 are still pending. So, these are results of the ones we've done thus far.
Will you acknowledge each one that comes in?
Correct. It's an automatic system. The system does it automatic. None of these have been done, but.
So, would you prefer then, if we have somebody contact us with an issue, would you prefer us to report it that way rather than sending you an email about it?
You can do it either way.
Because this way, we'll, we'll track it, right?
Yeah, this way it will actually be in this reporting system.
We'll track it and record, yeah.
And if you can train the people calling you.
To do this.
And then we'll have to call you. Like, you just do this.
That's a good idea.
You said you just didn't call you if we're not responding. It didn't go through there, right?
Oh, no, it now did. I had to register, but it worked.
Okay.
See if it's 17 now.
Was this the one?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. Okay, well.
So, that should be routed out to Public Works.
Yes.
And there's, is there an automatic acknowledgement that goes out and then there's a follow-up when they actually fix it?
Did you get an email back?
I, I, well, let's see.
It says it's been acknowledged, so.
It has. It has been acknowledged.
So, what happens? You get a, it says?
Yeah, you get an email saying, we've received your reported request. Thank you. Pothole. Is pothole one word or two words?
One.
Well, here's two words.
It's two. Up there, it's two words.
Yeah, yeah.
Could be two.
So, you didn't read.
Derek, what kind of education system do you have to the masses?
Come again?
What kind of education system do you have to send out to the citizens?
Can, can you show one of your videos? Because not only does it highlight you as a presenter doing a great job, but it shows the quality of our videos, which, it's only like a two-minute video, I think, so.
Okay, I'll show the iPhone one, I guess.
Need to request help pickup?
Can't talk with.
For a lost animal, a pothole, or a damage sign, or even maybe schedule a bus ride or counsel a bus ride? Well, there's an app for that. Today, I'll show you how to use the See Click Fix app. If you don't have the app, go to your iTunes or Google Play stores on your smartphone and type in See Click Fix. Click the word get or install to begin the download process. Once it is downloaded, click on the app to open it. The app will open up to the homepage or place tab where you can do various things such as call transit, do road closings, pay utility bills with traffic fines, view meetings, apply for a job, watch videos, or look at our social media pages. Notice the other three buttons on the bottom of the app screen. You can look at your profile, view issues in the city, or report. Let's report an issue. Let's click on the left button at the bottom of the screen entitled Report.